It says that the mayor's recommendation was the fifty thousand. So I have a question. Did my park, and who can, uh, through you, Madam Chair, to maybe Chad or someone from my park?
They kicked me out.
Maggie? Can you approach, um, the board? I just have a question. Did, did my park, um, apply?
Yes, we applied, um, I have the information right here. I would not pass that. Um, we applied with neighborhood engagement.
And how much did you ask for?
Um, I'm not sure of our original proposal. Sorry, we didn't.
It was fifty? Okay, okay. So why is it that the mayor's recommendation is fifty thousand? What is he talking about? Why, what is said there?
Why would he recommend that about, um...
You guys, the, the, I just see the, the twelve member, um, body recommended it, right?
Yes.
So why is he saying he recommended it?
I am not sure that's something you'll have to say to the man.
Oh, okay, okay. I, well, I just wanted to make sure that you guys did apply. It looks like he just want his name on it. Um, but thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
But, you know what? And see, this is the problem with me and voting on these resolutions for our work. We have not had a plan in me. There is so much that we can do with this money. We needed to look at all of the recommendations. We needed to look at who applied, everyone who applied. So... I don't wanna go on this stuff right now. I really have a plan in me. Well, I got colleagues sitting up here. They just wanna rubber stamp some stuff. I'm not into that.
Thank you for your time. If you want to press on, Madam Chair, over here. Um, given that my park didn't need to apply, um, it was for a very good cause, uh, both the community and, um, the mayor suggested, um, this be approved. I've, I am not understanding why you would hold this back. I don't know if we can comply votes, but, um, we've heard from, um, residents who are passionate about this project, um, and that will improve their community. And it's not my community, but I will support it because I'd like for the whole city to be able to do, um, projects in each ward. And, um, I don't see a reason to hold this back or not vote for it, so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Uh, and let me do some housekeeping. I want people to know, as we're trying to do our work up here, and the form is important, we have a person in the ninth ward recording again. I mean, it's so very good that she's on her phone taking pictures and recording. So Maggie, talking to Chad, it was submitted. It was submitted online before the deadline. And I did ask for us to get copies of screenshots so that when we're looking at it, we wouldn't have those questions. They have taken, took the raw data, put it on an Excel sheet. I like raw data. Give me a screenshot, show me, because that way it's timestamped and dated so that we know. Because some of these we don't know. But my park was put in before the deadline. The Neighborhood Engagement Hub was to be the fiduciary. My park has been a 501(c)(3) since nineteen eighty-six. So I didn't understand why they, they were even, they really didn't need one. Because they're doing some great things they've already been established. As far as the two parks, a part of it is not a state park for those funds. But now they don't have to do all that mowing, which was predictable, you don't know why, that they did for twelve years. So that park, we're now doing, so it's kind of like it's broken up. Is there any for handicap access? Absolutely. It's because that park was used. And we're talking about home values. People are drawn to my park because it is a home community. Now, every, every ward doesn't have this. My park has been there. My park was a part of the sixth ward when Mayor Neely was there. He said, "All those meetings, he don't listen, trust me, I see him there." And he tell everybody, every meeting, even before I was even elected. But before I was elected, he said, "Don't vote for him." But now that I'm elected, he says, "Watch those votes." I support my park, I support parks. And this isn't, for me, um, it's not a personality thing, this is a community thing. And we're watching home rates and values rise because this park is a staple of this community. Now, we're gonna have ice skating, I think, this winter. I used to ice skate at Pierce Park and was pretty good at it. And I'm telling you, I was the mermaid. And so I, I have asked my kids to give me a new pair of ice skates 'cause I'm gonna be out there ice skating. They provide activities so these kids aren't doing damage to your homes. So they're not getting into mischief. There are so many programs, the hockey, there's the, the equipment, game night, there's soccer. We have got a soccer league that is there that, um, one of my, um, guy, and I graduated Monica Perez, that she actually is a part of, and her coach, she's soccer, we went to Central. And so we are bringing back things to my park that we did not have. And there's no way a park wouldn't go get the soccer, and I've been over there. And the kids are coming from all over to play there. Now, she would have this endeavor community we shared. Right now, what we have before us is my park. It was underneath, and we looked at this, it was underneath the Neighborhood Engagement Hub. It was growing the park, and now it's separated. And now it is time to pass so we can get that. They have a plan. They've been in existence since nineteen eighty-six. They did the work on maintaining that park for twelve years and didn't have any help. It was the name, some of those lineboards were duct taped together, literally. And so I do want other parks, but I mean, I don't see parks in other wards. I would see things in some of the wards. I don't, that's not, I would like to see it, I want to have a working session. But we don't have anything that I can see for every ward. I talk about my park, I go to my park, I invite everyone to go to my park. And a lot of people in Flint go to my park. My park is the number one family use park in Flint. The number one, and it's growing. Bringing back kids and families is important, if you're talking about bringing back people to Flint. We have to have the schools, the communities, we have to have something for these children. Other than paintball, breaking into cars, all these things, breaking windows. This gives them some good things to do. I support this, and I always support my park. I would support my, um, my colleagues, their board, their ward. But we do have to make sure we are following the process. This one was put apart, this one isn't new to us. This is not new tonight, it's just been separated. So I would be voting yes to support this.
Anyone else want to speak to the first round?
Yeah, does anybody know, um, from my park or, did you guys ever get a spin on that?
Um, I didn't, I didn't ask.
Because Neighborhood Engagement's gonna take their ten percent, so you're gonna have forty-five thousand dollars left. Is that, um, for ten of my paths, in this instance, um, don't necessarily think that's his... Actuall?
So the process for this was started before I was involved. Um, I'm just, you know, I did ask Chad, who spoke earlier, if we received bids. And he's texted me back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he can leave to attend a school board meeting. So that is, you know, he has more information.
My next question would be to, as far as reading, see, right? Is this, uh, how was this res, how did it impact on the pandemic of COVID? How was the path lighted? Just wanna make sure it's in the right category. I don't know if path is necessarily lighted. Sorry, is there a Ashley here? Everybody can answer this?
So I did get a response in regards to the bids. Um, yes, we did have one bid. Um, we chose the lowest of the three, and we can get more required.
What was the bid that he said? While you're texting, can you stay aside for one second? I'm sorry, can you say your name on record?
Yes, why do you ask here? It's, I mean, it's all plenty of children.
Okay, Ashley. Are you, is this the right category for listing in, in that for light?
Yeah, so I wasn't, I'm not directly, I didn't, um, do this, but I believe it is. And, um, we should have, I'm tripping with the information to you, but I believe that this path is a direct, um, response.
Well, this doesn't say that it's been, um, it doesn't say that it's been approved by Ernst &amp; Young. So I'm wondering, like, did they approve this, um, Madam Chair, through you to, uh, finance chair? Basically, do you know anything about this? Is the right category and approval from Ernst &amp; Young?
My understanding is that, um, Ernst &amp; Young, that's all the resolutions prior to coming to council.
But did we request that, that we place an out resolution?
He had asked that a long time ago, it never has been. They said that it's automatic, I think that it doesn't. I asked for their signature, and, um, I don't know at what point that they actually reviewed them because I'm not part of that process. I haven't even spoken before, I haven't played with it, so it's kind of...
Requesting information, Madam Chair.
Uh, you, Councilman Fidger, Chad said, "Did you know?" Chad just said, "Yes." Um, did the bid to the company, they took the lowest bid for the payment. So he said they did, and it's the lowest bid.
It is, uh, forty-four thousand nine hundred.
So right up to forty-five thousand, that's what it is. I'm gonna put another request out there that, for paying for Ernst &amp; Young, I would appreciate it if we could give the information. It says that they agreed with these resolutions for the council council. Put that on the record again, yeah? Okay, that's all I have.
All right, anyone else in the first round?
All right, seeing that there's no one else, I'll go ahead and take my time. Um, so, um, Ms. Parks brings the data last week. And it wrote down the mayor's suggestions, it wrote down the committee's suggestions. They gave this to us last week for this specific category. So I just wanted to be clear of saying that, um, my colleague said that she don't know, um, why the mayor's recommendation is on the paper. So, um, so because, I mean, I just want to be factual. And so next we are, um, the question was, did my park apply, um, through the Neighborhood Engagement Hub? I know that Neighborhood Engagement Hub served as a fiduciary for a lot of neighborhood associations. Um, and they, um, even served as the neighbor, as human fiduciary to the Silver Park Neighborhood Association, where the, um, president applied for these honor funds with the Neighborhood Engagement Association. So I'm so happy to hear my colleague in the sixth ward say that she's on board with supporting initiatives and efforts, um, you know, in, in her colleague's wards. Because this is a big, major, um, thing that needs to be done in the second ward. Look, they're looking to tear down the, um, the Beavers nightclub area and looking to get rid of that concrete jungle that's been there for a long time. You have plants just taller than the fence. When we performed a tree up there a couple of years ago, we found skeletons. We believe it was skeleton of an animal, but it was just that much black litter. This, that right there, along with the thing that my park are trying to do, is they're helping to move Flint forward. So I look forward to voting for my park because it's a vote for the city of Flint. And I also look forward to voting for, um, the rest of the things on this agenda as well as when Silver Park come up. Looking forward to voting, um, I hope my colleagues will support the north side, the second ward in that initiative. So that's the first round, and now we are in the second round. Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, even though you stepped outside of Silver Park and other things, I did hear Mr. Murphy say that was not germane to this resolution. Prove you, Madam Chair, for Maggie. Maggie, you can wave your hand and don't have to come up. Did y'all find skeletons in my park?
Y'all can't follow the information?
No, yeah, I don't know what you're talking about, but I'll wait for Mr. Murphy to say, "That's not germane." I was wondering if they had found some skeletons in my park.
We found three.
I knew Silver Park didn't exist inside of my park, but you know, what's relevant to her is relevant to me. I just thought Mr. Murphy was gonna say something. I didn't hear a mumbling word. I didn't hear a mumbling word. Let me say this, Maggie, you take this back to my park. Councilman Mayes don't mind giving y'all fifty thousand. Councilman Mayes can support fifty thousand. When I took office, Hasselberry Park was weeds. The community center was padlocked. I drove Howard Crawford my car and took him over to the first ward to Hasselberry Park, and we set up a 501(c)(3), and the rest is history. I hear people bragging about they picked up paper in Silver's park and things of that nature. We didn't open up parks, and we didn't put playground equipment. I forgot a lot of stuff I did while people bragged after a year of what they did. I want every ward to be happy. I want every park to be taken care of. We used to have a parks department, did you know that? So let nobody fool you with these red speeches. But what we concerned about is getting out stuff properly, properly, just to spike our posts about that. We concerned about the detailed prices, 'cause if not, you have to come back for what we call a change order to get more money, which ain't no problem. But you know my problem is politicians. Really, I heard what he said in the last my park meeting. "Why'd you vote this way? Why'd you abstain?" That don't put no pressure on me, I'm watching him. Every time he lie, his nose sick rump. I call him the old Pinocchio Nose Man. He'll tell a quick with facts. "Oh, I had a degree, you ain't got no degree, man. This day you come out of high school, gotta show the quick line." With Chief Stapp beat me up, and he answered aggressively, say, "I told the chief of staff I would kick his..." It wasn't true. "With no sick rump." Every time he lie, his nose sick rump. And he got a gang of folks around, and I'm in City Hall today. One of them told me, the mayor say, "If they talk to any council person, they gonna get fired." What, what type of communication is that? Scared to death to talk to a council person if we talk to any council person. He told us we getting fired. I've been around for thirty or forty years, I ain't never seen a man with the little Napoleon syndrome. You know, the, the Napoleon syndrome of somebody short trying to be big?
But, Mr. Mayes, you're not germane.
Oh, I am germane when I'm talking to Maggie.
So lest I talk about the mayor's personal characteristics, and lest they germane you.
The mayor brought this resolution to this council at this time. If I'm talking to Maggie, the board at my park will let them know I'm in agreement with it. And the mayor brought something at this time, and I might not wanna vote for it in November, but I vote for it in December, January, because the work might not be done to the summer months. So it's germane, you just don't like me talking about your, but even there. No, I'm gonna talk about it. Y'all talk about me. Oh, you're not germane, you said the mayor's name. The mayor brought this resolution with you at this time. And I don't want no misunderstanding about how I feel about fifty thousand dollars. But I do want an understanding about how I feel about the overall process and the way of doing business. And how I feel about this Lewis and others, politician, scary politician, I'm not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayes. Anyone else?
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Ashley, as you're on your way down here, um, I, I have a question. And I hate that our staff sits so far back in the news that time, and our time is limited. I would like to know, did Ernst &amp; Young, and maybe I missed this part, but approving for the category? We have a couple more questions. For them to, they put in this category, or to put in this category, because that's one of the questions. Ernst &amp; Young is not here as we are approving our, which means we're vetting everything ourselves.
So you want to go with this project?
Right, they say this is okay to be in this category, to be approved under our, under client.
So it's, to my knowledge, everything that's presented to council is approved by your...
Okay, so Ernst &amp; Young has to approve it. And so I did receive, it was citywide pay, that they did get a two-inch, um, big trail dig whatever for the, the trail. And they did get the lowest bid, which was citywide. And I bet those are the things that when we get them, because this council asks a lot of questions. That if, when you, when the administration is giving information, I would like to see, because if they, if these keep coming up here, we are gonna have to stop. This takes our time. And then we get the mayor saying to us, and council does function, you know, council takes all this time. And they don't get anything done. Y'all don't have a full package. So we, we shouldn't have to act, and we read when we're up here. Everybody that's here, and the difference between councils, if you look at videos of the last council, you have one personality, you got one front end, that's Santino Rivera. This council, everybody is on all devices, they're there. I mean, iPad, your laptop, your cell phone. So when y'all send up a complete package, then we can make our decision. This was incomplete, so we're having to vet this right now. This is why meetings take so long. Because before, we should have got it, and the criteria, we have asked, what is the category? We want Ernst &amp; Young here, we want iPads to see, do this screenshot with a date that shows when it was put in to be approved. These are all the questions, whether before the deadline. All these things should be in order. It's like if you buying a house, they make you give everything up for your firstborn child. We want all of that, and we treat it like that. So when we get to it, this council reading to keep everybody, keep their devices on them, and where they go. Now, I sent out a 16:02 clock in the morning, not with the expectation to have anybody respond, but certain people to respond, and I'll send back, you need to go to bed. And if you like, turn first, you go to bed. So what I'm saying, give us the information, allow us to act, act to you. So when you send these up, and I know Emily is over at the park, but she's not here, please let Emily know. We want to see a screenshot when it was done, when it was, uh, timestamped and dated. I don't wanna see the Excel sheet, I don't wanna leave one. I know how to do that, I don't wanna do that. I wanna see the raw data before it was transferred over to the Excel sheets. That's what I would like, just like this one. Councilman Fidger asking about the payment. If we could have said, okay, what bicycle path? Because this is a question, we gotta get like our move to be like, how, how can we get these quicker? Ms. Parks, ring?
The affirmation is now put out online by Ernst &amp; Young. It's nothing is redacted until you...
It is online now?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I actually told you that earlier, but I think about that a couple of days ago. So you guys can go on there and get every piece of information that they have to see.
Okay, and so, for, what's the link number, is it on the city website?
I, I would edit for you. I don't, I didn't get a message, I don't share it. But it's, I did get a message earlier this week that it's all out.
Okay, and so that's just the quick transfer. And so that way, so to back it up, Chad did get citywide, they have the lowest bid for the, the trail. Um, the information is now available online. Chad, come on up, my time is about up. So Chad rang back here, he's pressing my park's location. So you did get the lowest bid, right?
Sorry, Cindy. Sorry, I stepped out, I was at the school board meeting, and I've been waiting for a project. I'm working on it during term month. What was the question?
Did get the lowest bid?
For the, for this particular trail, we only got one bid, but it was from the company that gave us the lowest of three bids.
Hey, Chad, that's your time.
Did you go again?
So...
Chad, please continue, I have my time.
So, thank you. Uh, it was the lowest of three contractors from the bicycle garden project that we did a year ago. So I have pretty good confidence, probably the lowest, but we're more than happy to give two more quotes. I have two other companies I can call if that would be requested or needed.
It's not time, I, I think... Oh, wait, all right, I got a question, okay, all right.
I have a couple comments to make. First of all, the grant is for the maximum amount, you know, we don't have to give you, you don't have to spend the maximum amount. If you get a lower bid, then that's if only the amount of money you get. You're not going to get fifty thousand, it's allocated up to fifty thousand dollars. So I wanna make sure that the council understands that, as well as members, um, who are listening and, as well as who are here. So, um, if, I don't know what the administration, that's administrative. If you're going to get other bids, that's administrative choice as to how it's gonna be done. That's really not us. That is, um, so if they say get two more bids, and then that's what you do. That's not our business, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm in favor of your project, um, so I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna vote for it. What's your request? Fifty thousand dollars is the maximum that is in that resolution. We are not going to go over that amount.
Again.
Uh, my question to you is, so they only spent forty-eight, they have to give two back?
Well, I'm not sure how that's going to... I'm not sure how that additional money is going to be spent, or how it's going to be paid to the organization. I don't know how that's going to be done. I'm assuming that you have to submit. Phil, I, um, Phil, can you answer that question for us, please? How are these people going to get paid for the grants? So example, if, if they get a bid on, um, for forty-eight thousand, like Mr. Fidger said, will they be submitting that down to us, and then we pay it, with us to you?
I don't know the details.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear that.
I don't know the details of that.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. Resolution is only for fifty thousand dollars, you are not going to, if you spend more than that, you have to come back to us.
Yeah, I can answer the question. The Neighborhood Engagement Hub is the fiduciary. The Mount Park Neighborhood Association's never received federal funds, so we do not qualify to receive these funds directly. So that's why we worked with them. They require ten percent fee, I would love it to be lower, maybe negotiate that, I'm not in charge of that. Um, so they would be, they would receive the money, they would pay... Um, so they would be, they would receive the money, they would pay the contractor. Our Neighborhood Association would never get any of the funds for it. If we were able to find a quote that was lower, then you would send less money based on the, the new quote to NEH, and they would pay them the appropriate amount, so.
Shall I speak?
Okay. So the fiduciary funds, like the Neighborhood Hub is a fiduciary company, because it's the grant, it's a grant. They don't know your name, but they got the idea you could use hard, you know, and they ask for fiduciary. So the fiduciary role is to accept the money under their name. Uh, sometimes fiduciary, you have to submit receipts, and then they reimburse them, or give a fund to him to do that. And then, but the fiduciary is responsible for the reporting to the, uh, to the rental. And so that's the fiduciary role, and that's what Neighborhood Hub would be doing. Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I think so. Kind of sort of that.
Okay.
Um, all right, then. I, I thank you very much. You're welcome. Go ahead.
Okay, anyone else who wants to speak in the second round?
I do.
Come on, Chad.
Yeah, I am going to start off saying that I support this. I do want to kind of clear up something that Chad may say. So with this particular funding, it's federal funding. So you have to have a SANS.gov number. A lot of people that apply don't have, have never got federal funding. They've never applied for a SANS.gov number. And so because when you don't have those two things with our funding, you cannot apply for our funding, no matter how established you are. You need someone who has already, who does have a SANS.gov number that they can report, which is another reason for the ten percent. The reason they're taking ten percent in being fiduciary is because at the end, that money that they're getting from the federal government, the people that are actually taking all the money into their entity are responsible for paying back anything associated with that, any taxes, or they have to report that. And so that ten percent administrative fee also goes toward the, the cost of their going to incur for getting money from the federal government having to later report that. So that's why they're getting a ten percent fee for all of these people, because all of this is considered federal government money once that SANS.gov number comes into play. So for anybody that had any questions, is that, there we go. So as we move forward, and we have that question, and it goes up again and again, it, it doesn't matter if you establish thirty, forty, fifty years. If you don't have a SANS.gov number, you do not qualify for these funds. And so you have to work with someone who has one that does qualify. At the end, they are solely responsible in reporting. It doesn't matter that they're saying they're serving as a fiduciary for you. But money was given to that entity. So now that entity is responsible for anything that comes along and taking that money over for you, which is why that ten percent administrative fee is there to cover that entity layer.
Thank you, Councilor Chad. Anyone else who wants to speak?
Um, yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Byron.
Do you have a chair to this, um, Sparks Green? Does she want to? Um, oh, she's, she's. I just wanted, I, I just want to make sure that Ernest Young have approved this particular project under the category of light. Because, so. You guys are doing a, more or less a, um, what is it? A sidewalk? And I, I just want to, um, did Chad do? He like, oh, Chad. Chad, so, so this, this is actually a trail?
Yes.
And it's gonna be paved?
Yes.
Okay. And so how did you write up your, your grant? What, what exactly, did you, did you write it up saying that this would, um, I just want to, I just want to make sure that it falls under the category of light.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then? Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that's partly for you all to vote on and to decide. I think I've been a park adopter for five years, and I think our parks kind of were looking like light about five years ago. So this is part of an overall vision to improve them, um, what we've been doing, uh, in, in Mount Park. Um, the usage, uh, has increased in the neighborhood a lot in the park as a result of the pandemic. Um, and so that's, I think, another connection piece to the park of funding. Um, so it's an investment in beautifying our park and our neighborhood. Um, yeah, it's not exactly like tearing down blighted houses or something like that.
Right.
I think it's a very reasonable question.
Yeah, and, and, and that's my question. How does it fit under the category of light, you know?
Yep, uh, yeah, I have the same question for, uh, Tom White from Neighborhood Engagement Hub. And he, he advised, felt like that's where it could fit, based on the goals of the project. That would be, I think, again, for you all to agree on or, or not. Thanks for bringing it up.
And that's why it's so important, thank you, Chad, that's why it's so important for Ernest Young to be here, because these are questions that we have as the council. Will this fit under the category of light? And so, and so that, that's, that's one of my issues. You know, that's why I'm so hesitant. Uh, in addition to, I think we need to have a, uh, a meeting. The council, we need to have a meeting and all of the ORA resolutions we should have in front of us. So I'm stuck. You guys know I support my park. I support all of, all of the organizations that's coming before us. But Ernest Young, they're missing, how are we gonna, how are we approving ORA funds? And we have questions for Ernest Young and them that here. That's the problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, and, and, and Chad, I don't know. Go ahead, Chad.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask where those categories came from. Did they come from Ernest Young?
Good question. Yeah, good question. That's it.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they came from the federal government. They had categories. So I want to make sure that this, what you guys are doing, fit under the category of light.
Turn it, the whole city is pretty aggressive.
So that's, that's, that's where the, um, categories came from. Thank you, thank you, Chad.
Madam Chair. Ms. Warren. Um, Ernest Young does not decide the categories. Uh, we had decided how much we were going to put in each category, and we as a council will decide, um, what category, uh, situation fits. Ernest Young is just, um, here to approve. To continue to, um, state if a resolution is, um, compliant or not, and that's it. So there, this is council's decision, not, not Ernest Young's. That, that's all of these reasons. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, um, I'm looking at this other resolution, um, that's built for Parks and Recreation, and I agree with my colleague, he talked about my life, but in this Parks and Recreation, um, funding, it's one million, three hundred thousand dollars. And then when you look at, um, the proposed action, it's the same number, it would have fit up under that category. And then allocated up as one point three, a million, one point, one million, three hundred thousand dollars versus it being light, as light bill away, to me, like, um, dumping and trash and all of that. And I'm, I'm not understanding the similarities of light and, uh, path. So I'm, I'm not sure that we got that somewhere. Again, when I'm looking at the resolution for the one park, the one million, three hundred thousand dollars. You know, I got some personal, it's just, I want to support, my colleague, um, Councilwoman Byron, with her project, and I don't want to hold it up, even though I'm supposed to be passionate about, okay, about the park and moving stuff forward. So when I looked at this resolution for the one million, three hundred thousand dollars, I was looking forward to seeing the, um, improvement for a billion dollar park in that unit, and I don't see it there. I'm hoping, and I've been moving around, trying to talk to the administration to see if we can, um, work something out to be able to make sure that those projects that have been there and there to my heart, and the thought of war, get done.
Your question, Ms. Warren. Um, did you know that under Resolution two three zero three nine two, and I'm kind of getting several of the water to our children, that it does stay underneath there, the category of neighborhood improvement? That's the category that is tied to funding. If you look underneath that on our.
Say the resolution number here?
Two three zero three nine two.
Two three zero.
We need to share your asking, what should we have?
Um, could, um, show your asking, come to share, to, um, ask you to show your lights. Could you explain to us why the fifty thousand is up under the light and not Parks and Recreation? Yes, why would it be up under the light category versus, um, the one million, three hundred thousand dollars for parking in this neighborhood versus in the neighborhood? And it ain't to pick up no paper or cleaning no vacant lot or no vacant house. It's to do with that. So how does light relate to a, a asphalt path?
So the one point three is designated for, uh, department-led projects?
I really can't hear what you're saying.
The one point three is, um, designated for department-led projects. The fifteen thousand, I believe, is the neighborhood group. Um, so that was an application that they submitted. So that's why they put it under, um, neighborhood improvement so far. So parks is, we have a park planner, we have projects, and we're planning for, um.
And then even when I'm looking up under park improvement, we've been trying to get ballers up at Dewey Park for a while, and it's not even in here. It's about naming the parks. That's nothing to do with, so I'm not.
Don't get jealous, man.
Yeah, when you look at the, um, Jones apartment.
Yeah, so.
The background, some of them, they named the parks with all of this. But that is the resolution that we also, I don't even know to talk about that right now. We're on a resolution for my park. And I want, I'm gonna support my colleague with this resolution for my park. But I got some questions, um, and concerns about these other projects. And then when I'm looking at, my problem is you guys are not communicating with us enough. And I appreciate you, and you have done way more now than anybody ever have. So I want to thank you for that, but we got some problems.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murray. Anyone else? All right, so I've seen no one else. I don't want to get in my time. Um, Phil, thank you. Phil? All right, um, can you explain how the allocation plan, the ORA allocation plan correlates to the federal reporting, please?
That's only a question for, for.
So, if I remember correctly, you said the ORA. It's a better name, right? There were different categories, I believe, the council approved. Branched out by subcategories, which pisses me off, which is what they couldn't. And so under each category, they allotted money. Now, under parks and rest, that wasn't an application process. So that they, I don't know how planning developed what needs what over there. So that wasn't the application process. When my park sent their things in, they sent it under a category. I don't know who had the power, or anybody in here or other committee had the power to switch categories. So that's the category that they applied under, and so that's why everything stays under what it is. The government had their categories, which was kind of general. Then the committee, I mean, the council split up the categories to kind of match what we do here in the city, which I believe is their right. And then a lot of funding for each one of those categories. And then what the committee did was go in with the applications and made sure, but they were going to make sure that it went over the budget, that you guys already approved. And when they did, we adjusted, and so that would be different.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, all right. So, so looking at, um, my park, Neighborhood Association that applied for this. Um, people might, the Neighborhood Association applied for these funds. And so they are using it for a thing that the Neighborhood Association does. So we need, so we need to be mindful that when we look at light, what do we call light? We call it light overgrown. When someone's bush is going over your chest, you feel that's light. When the grass is high, you feel that's light. So I can see how it can be grandfathered into the category of light, of, of light, because they are tearing the pathway. They're getting rid of overgrowth, they're getting rid of brush. So that's the way that that could be within the light category. And all of this, all of this falls underneath the one bucket of neighborhood improvement. I don't want to nitpick this away, and I don't want to nitpick this apart, because this is a good project. They apply it for. It's underneath the bucket of neighborhood improvement. And it's about getting rid of overgrowth. And they just so happen to put this in the category of light remediation. And what are people doing under these categories? They're getting rid of light and overgrowth, and they are creating beautiful places and spaces. And this is exactly where my park is going. So no, it's not miscategorized. Should have been categorized somewhere else? Absolutely. But it's categorized here in this category. This category has full funding. They had, this category has the fifty thousand dollars. If my colleagues will look at the green sheet of paper, um, that was in your box, that is from Key Dency County Beautiful. And those were the, uh, for the prices that they received to install ballers and also, um, parking lots. They saw that parking lots and ballers that they were at a, at a premium, so they were way more than what they expected. If you are to move this over to that category, there's a big possibility that it will not get funded. So let's go ahead and just keep it where it is, because it's doing what it's in that they're gonna do. They want to clear path. They want to remove overgrowth. I support that. Let's not keep the hand down the road. And also, my colleagues will find, they have this in their packet, they have a packet that says Neighborhood cleanup application. This is just a compilation of the information that you have, and it's put in a more digestible form. This has everyone that had applied, this has, um, other projects, how much they asked for and everything. I would like to do this by category. And subcategory, if we're going for the neighborhood improvement, let's go ahead and make neighborhood improvement. The ORA, um, committee can bring you, um, write-ups. So what, what we can do, we can have all the information we need to create resolution and then vote it up and down. So let people know where they stand, stop paying up their money. So with all that being said, then it's time for the vote. We're looking to add Resolution two three zero three nine two, which is ORA funding for the Neighborhood Engagement Hub and my park Neighborhood Association. Roll for Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Ms. Parker? I'm staying. I'm even standing with this council. Referring?
Yes. Yes.
Viper? Forger?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm staying because we haven't done it all. I haven't crossed our Ts. As it relates to this, I support the neighborhood process. But this procedure, we still got some work to do for those reasons that I'm staying at this time.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
What is seven yes, zero no, two exceptions?
What is seven yes, zero no, two exceptions? That resolution passes. Now we're on Resolution two three zero three nine three.
Madam Chair?
Ms. President?
Make a motion for two three zero three nine three.
And who often reports a pro- resolution two three zero three nine three? Is there any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Busha?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. President?
Yeah, who can give me some information about this increase through and ask very specifically, question, who's here for that? Come on, poor person. Come on now, the clock ticking, the clock ticking. If you need her, bring her up too, but I ain't really got but a few minutes and I'm gonna be closing fast. Okay, you tired, but I spear it in the kitchen? What is that?
So it's a community kitchen, um, I'm setting up it's in the building next to Asbury.
I've seen you over there before. It's when we were doing a food giveaway. I've seen you there before.
Yes, so, um, it's gonna be a community center and a community kitchen that'd be open for, um, people in the community use or organizations use or event space. Also, um, like a-
What y'all gonna do with the hundred thousand?
Well, um, this, this has a lot to do with the, um, development.
So you're gonna now remodel the building?
Yeah, we're remodeling the old building that's, uh, a board connected to that Blue G's on the gray one.
A hundred thousand dollars worth if y'all put it out for speed or take on prices or anything?
Uh, yeah, we have, um, it's, it's right on set of a three-phase building process. Um, so-
It's tied to a hundred thousand, even the how much it is paid.
In total, it's going to be closer to six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, so this is gonna be a piece of the money you need.
Yeah, so we also, um, we have so matching funds. We also have, uh, CP, uh, people that, um, were requesting, uh, three hundred fifty thousand.
And I was telling the my park people, fifty thousand that they requesting ain't a lot of money. A hundred thousand that you requesting ain't a lot of money. It might be a lot for you, but it ain't a lot for me. We brought in ninety four million dollars. And I think we got somewhere between thirty and fifty million left. So your hundred thousand don't bother me. What bothers me is the process. The way that the mayor and two or three council people have been operating behind the scenes. And we might not have the votes to get it straightened. They don't do what they want to. If they make some mistakes, it's gonna be on me. It's not gonna be on my vote. Because just like I supported the children, the pregnant women and kids. I support my farm. I support y'all. But at this point, I'm probably abstaining because of the process. The lack of the ability to get answers and cor- correct questions in a timely manner. This money, I was just telling Maggie, this money has to be allocated by December of next year. And then it have to be spent by December two thousand twenty-six. So I won't give you my word, but I'll support you when they do the process right. If they don't do the process right, we don't let five or six of them take the votes. I'm not gonna be a part of it at this time on this day. Let me ask you this first. Um, who have y'all met with? Anybody?
Um, Ms. Rogers?
On the council?
Um, I don't know if we've had directly-
He got something he wanna add? Let's see what he talking about. Go ahead. You kinda tall. You might wanna lean down to that mic and pick up the whole thing.
It's okay, man.
Yes, it is.
I'm Tyler Bailey. I'm the Deputy Director of Business Services. So it's past me where the division that I work with are zoning. Zoning has been working with this project. I'm in the architectural team yesterday, um, and they have-
You met with who?
The architectural team that's overseeing this project.
Okay, right now I'm concerned about who you met with on this council for it compared to-
So, Angelo's saying, um, I'm not sure if we met directly with a council member in the project because-
Put it in the paperwork, yeah?
Well, as far as the current, um-
Put it in the paperwork.
So originally, the paperwork was put in by our grant writer.
Okay, good. Get another five and I'm gonna try to get y'all on the topic back.
Thank you. Uh, did that miss me, sir? Go ahead.
Uh, can you say, please? Or do you just stumble on? Um, so my first question, I noticed that this will be a secondary progress market. So our progress market there open, what, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday? So this season will be open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday?
Uh, yeah.
And I think that is maybe my home question for now. Um, this, I, I see that this is addressing community security in a place, uh, that desperately, desperately needed. So, uh, I'll wait for the second round of questions to see if I have another question, but I think that's a game for me. Thank you.
Anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Murphy?
Thank you.
Um, Tyler, can you, during talking, can you pick up? So this project coming to span through that, you went to something about the architectural design?
Yes. So I remember the architectural team gesturing, you think, and they walked me through, this was my first meeting for this project, so we're getting to that in a while, the years are gone. But they walked me through the step process of the board going to go through to exceed all the funding. They have a substantial amount of community partnerships involved with the project. And they are working in tandem with the city provisions to ensure everything is done appropriately, on code, and, um, proportion. That's my second question.
So Asbury is one of the help centers. And Asbury, I have worked at, I get here one time a year ago, one. But I've worked at Greater Hook Temple and, and mine in Bethel. When I go to Bethel, they treat me not very nice. They work me to death and there's no breaks. And Mr. Harold Woodson is listening. He be hard on me. I can even tell people hide. And they coming through the knocking. So these help centers, and, and we've put in our mind picture of where Asbury's at, Angelo's, um, everything in that, Homeville School used to be, I'm dating myself now. And which would have been in the funeral hall, which was burnt down. You had a very high rate, uh, uh, our school, like ours were. And abandoned homes and gangs over there. And Asbury just keeps going when they open and goes along. I think it's important we have these projects. I get and understand my colleagues, you know, their decisions. I respect them. Because we, we all process information differently. I know that it wasn't for me. We're doing the work here. We shouldn't have to. All this should be in the packet. It should come up here, everything we need. And you see them scrambling back and forth. Council Murphy lost eight hours going back and forth. So I, I think, so is, Council General Griffin Carrick busy too. They been, they been busy till we haven't had all the information and these packets. But that's an administration issue so that put, put all the information in there to let us go through. Because we all just ask for the same things. And I think a lot of, in my colleagues, we, there's a frustration, not with your project at all. But we're not getting the information in a timely manner so that it is accessible and we have time to digest it. It has not been that way. Um, but I know that the help centers are needed. You do have a, and when you live in an area, you have to think about Flint. You do not have a real, in my neighborhood, a what I consider a real supermarket or store. You gotta go to, you know, outside. You go, I go to Kroger and Carrot. But Kroger and Carrot, it's just not as nice as the Kroger and flush it. I'm just gonna say it. It's just not. And so then I like to go to office and I like to go to Greg John's. So grocery shopping is you gotta go everywhere. Then you gotta figure out what you get because they just something nice vegetable, how you prepare them. Because, and I become almost like an expert, like eggplant now and there are different things that you get because they're available. Teaching people how to cook and having a kitchen, uh, isn't, some people don't know how to cook. You know, when I grew up, I mean, our chicken sandwich was a chicken, egg, onions, bread, and hot sauce. Now you got Popeyes and Chick-fil-A. They will wait and for hours in line. I will not. They got two stand to put pimento cheese on. I like pimento cheese. So I think it's important to have food available and have it in our community. When we used to have home ec niners, I mean, they taught, I learned how to sew at Selby's School. I remember lived on Warren Street and I walked up to Selby. I learned how to cook at Selby's School. I learned how to sew at Selby's School. They taught us how to make house shoes. And we made house shoes and little bags. So having these things up in that community has been so devastating, so devastating. And this amount of buyers alone, we see buyers in the east side. We know that it's that area, the state streets over there. We, we know that Asbury has and is a staple in this, in our community. And I, I believe we should support it. But I also agree with my colleagues that it's not coming up the way it should be. And that's an administration prob- uh, problem. And I, and I will send Shelly, um, she's here tonight. I'll get an email to her and then we'll do so that we can make this clause as possible.
All right. So thank you, Ms. Parker. Anyone else speaking in the middle of my-
Um, I'm sorry, show us the issues.
I will see, I'll see, um, um-
Since city council wasn't involved in, um, putting this together, can you tell us why the amounts are less? I mean, we've got, we've got some resolutions where mayors give more money than they're asking. This resolution, they're cutting half, so why are, how do we come to the dollar amount say they're asking?
Um, I was not involved in putting it together this evening. Um, I'm not, in my opinion, I'm currently in, I'm in, I'm in community services, uh, that is a piece of parks. Um, all of our H C T is community home fund and, uh, I don't feel great with the problem.
For you, Madam Chair, to, uh, the finance chair. And we, I wonder why don't we have to plan that?
Who is that? Is she new over something? She don't know nothing.
But tonight, we're only looking to allocate two hundred thousand in two, uh, resolutions. What else do we have planned with eight hundred thousand?
Have you, have you looked at this? It passed out last week. This is, uh, this is a spreadsheet that I created.
Is it out there?
It, it says the balance as of the last meeting. Um, for food access, we had a balance of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Why does this say seven hundred thousand?
We gave four hundred and fifty thousand to the, um, to United Way for the food access that in progress. I can't answer that. I didn't figure that, sir. I can only, uh, tell you what I know. Why blame me? That's here by chair. You know what I get. This is the-
Ms. Ms. Park Screen? Um, this resolution for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, but it's saying we have a million dollars available that we allocated or that we protected for increasing food access in the other town. Um, that contradicts what, um, Ms. President?
I'm not sure.
You know, it's like-
I didn't mean that. I have this, I said, we knew you that, we already said it.
Says on this resolution. You have a seat? You can press. So, that's-
So the amount that you guys allocated under that gap.
So that's not how much we have available, that's how much we've allocated?
Yes, that's how much you guys allocated under that gap.
Can we change that to, set available? When I say, when I see available, that's how much we have to spend.
Sometimes don't get the labels right, but I'll change it for you.
So, Ms. President, how much are you saying we have?
Five hundred and fifty thousand. And you'll get an updated list as Monday.
So, um, are you aware of these mail signatures pending of funding this government?
Yes. Just what's, um, I actually, um, added the finance committee. There is, uh, twenty two thousand, I believe, for the Franklin Avenue mission. Um, I think it's twenty two thousand Franklin Avenue mission. That's the only one that I have, that I know of. Um, because I, what I did is I went through the resolutions and found things that I thought that we could prove that were fifty thousand or less because I didn't want to step on too many toes.
I'm not sure. Did we have that over last, um, we, we didn't have, we had yesterday category.
No, and I just, and I, I was in a bad mood when I did this. I was, I was on a rant.
You ever tend to say?
Okay.
Um, anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair?
Ms. President?
Um, I fully support Asbury's mission. I have toured their gardens and their woodhouses and the past. Um, and I think that there is a better way to provide fresh food and vegetables than from right there in the backyard. I wish it was in my board. It's blocked by, yeah, okay, please. Um, but I fully support their mission and I have a question for them. This, are you gonna be utilizing the old Angelo's? Is that? Cause I think when I talked to, I was at the church a couple, um, a year or so ago and I was told that the hope, the plan was to renovate Angelo's to be the-
Right. Uh, that was the original plan, um, due to, um, breakdown in negotiations and also, uh, recent, uh, funding that took place. Either outline building, which I would be better to go, kind of, building, um, connected to Angelo's.
Okay. So you're not gonna be using Angelo's?
Unfortunately, not.
Yeah, that's a shame because your kitchen is not, um, an approved kitchen, right?
Well, we do have a commercial kitchen.
Okay, it is approved commercial kitchen, okay.
But, um, we want to have open access to, um, community in a better way and also, um, to be able to have a type of fire charred there that would also service other small, um, growing operations in the community as well.
I hope that more, um, community members would be involved in helping with the garden in the area from the third and the fourth boards and, um, but I one hundred percent support, um, this project. And luckily, I'm no longer a member of Asbury, so I can vote for it.
That's good. Thank you.
Well, that, that's good for you.
Well, that, that's good for you in one way and for you in another.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the first round? You did.
That, um, Madam Chair.
No, you didn't.
Right, uh, so this, uh, Madam Chair, Ms. Murphy. Some of the parts are rated over the country. So the original, we think, uh, because from the organization was a hundred and ninety five thousand. Two hundred and forty five. What did the, um, committee recommend?
They didn't recommend. Uh, council. These are, so many things over here today are, so many things that the council would like to see, which I asked, right? So they worked with it, so somebody asked, so that's why they didn't get the full.
Oh.
Okay?
So, now, you do know that some of the resolutions on the agenda today did not go through committee?
Okay, I probably don't need to process it, but yeah.
And that's where we do the part.
Okay.
And then council meetings, our special council meetings, council meetings, that's been the fault.
Okay.
So we're doing big work now. That's, I mean, and that's my problem. We, we, you know, we're circumventing a process. The process.
Not purpose.
And I know, and I know, I know, the process is to go through committee party. And then it passes to council.
Thanks for that information.
And, and so, that's where I have a problem.
Okay, I appreciate you all.
The process. But, um, so I see where, but it says that the mayor's recommendation is a hundred thousand. So this didn't go through to the committee. They're saying that.
This was at council. So I tried to get kind of the feel of what the council would like to see in their board. And so, Asbury was not, I don't think they were recommended by committee, but they were recommended by the council. They weren't, okay, I don't know. Some were.
They were recommended by the committee.
In some category, but I don't know if this is.
Okay.
It is. Well, yes.
Okay.
But we hadn't gotten to this section, so, like I said, these were council recommendations that we were just trying to afford. For the committee.
Okay. Alright, I'm. You know what, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion, um, I'd like to make a motion that we send this resolution, um, back to committee.
Okay.
There's a motion for a resolution, two, three, zero, three, nine, three, back to committee. Any support? Any support? For that, for lack of support.
Now, Madam Chair.
Go ahead and.
I see you're supporting.
Okay. And I probably said my council member, send the resolution two, three, zero, three, nine, three, back for two, excuse me. Uh, finance committee?
Yes.
Your first.
Finance committee.
First chair.
The finance committee on the twenty first.
The finance committee on the twenty first.
Step out of chair.
Uh, Mr. Murphy?
Step out of chair. I'm gonna say this. You know, I'm gonna take a page out of y'all playbook. It's eight thirty nine. You've been posted for a year for five o'clock. Finance committee, every day we have been dealing with is finding. Ms. Priestley, I guess, is so in lockstep with y'all that she won't even vote to go to her own committee. And you love being a chair. I put a motion on the board that guarantees it moves our stuff to finance. That's why y'all can't get stuff done. Since y'all get on the council, I don't recall a special affairs meeting ended at five thirty yet. Y'all gonna vote to move this back to committee and each one of them. And if y'all sensational six or silly six or foolish five or whatever. Pretty much. Wanna keep doing this, that's, that's fine. But my thing, the prince ain't gonna be on none of this. And if you buying out stuff ain't in certain categories because y'all should be smart enough to demand that when we dealing with Arco funds, Ernst and Young is here. But I don't know what the political wheel or the political push is to be in a special meet on top of finance committee. We not talk to my prop and Maggie thought the deadline was December this year. I said Maggie, the deadline on this money until December next year. To be allocated and then be spent by two thousand twenty six. I mean, I believe y'all proud the spitting of root or five of steps and pass them. I am a council man, yeah, I've been passed that. News and others, and the mayor is saying we don't know how to take care of business. I got news for the people of the city of Perry. If the council don't vote, ain't no millions of dollars spent and ain't no business taken care of. You got council members that bought into it. They believe they ain't take care of business. We used to sit in here to one, two at night, take care of the city here. Now all of a sudden you got some know it alls giving speeches, making it sound right, and it's embarrassing. And I'm gonna keep talking about it. Embarrassing.
Alright, anyone else would like to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. I want to support this back to finance committee. This is, um, uh, something that this particular, um, they don't make it, they don't spoke. We know what Asbury does. Uh, I want to support the citizens to finance service, um, always up or down. And I do understand what my colleague is saying about going to what, and finance committee really is something. It's just, it's, it's the common sense that we, that we falling up to falling down is in a category of the criteria. Let's go along and this people, this Asbury, this one is paying, or she's spending a lot of time with, um, these resolutions. They fix the criteria, so I can see you got some real tough questions about it. If this is something, um, important, I want to, I want to support, um, this, this special meeting that we are in now. Rather we be here to, we not, for one high belong. If I have to be in the meeting where we move this up or this up approved, we ain't got, we talking about that. Maybe to, um, more of we can get accomplished, come down with it. The residents, they waiting on us to move on things for the longest. They want to, now, for who this world, for Asbury Church, they able to do, they able to do, um, I don't think they working. We ain't even out there working. Awesome.
Alright, anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. And look respect to all of my colleagues and you all, our voters are voting. So do we, are we wanting work now? We are, we're vetting them right now. We are actually vetting, we're talking to people in Asbury are here. Um, we don't have Ernst and Young here, so we gotta be having that Ernst and Young get to, fuck that. And I don't have confidence that they gonna come. But according to, I add, I can maybe, you know, you said that a lot of them were asking you. You got, and I can be absolutely, but you're a fool. And that we're asking if Ernst and Young will be, cause you're the one asking for, for the spreadsheet and we are communicating.
Request information. Um, did you know on the resolution, it said before the funds are spent, the city of Flint, our administration, compliance with the Ernst and Young implementation firm shall review and ensure compliance with the latest US Department of Trade final rule?
It says shall, we're gonna say it live through you.
But, but they're saying that they were going to look at it, they vote for it, they're gonna look at it, so will be vetted before any fund are spent?
So they will go back to, will you be vetted, see? Has it been vetted now?
Uh, request information.
Okay, juice for juice, yes. I was, that's where church is. Okay, so hey, five, nine, two minutes.
It says that before any funds are spent, so no money will leave the city of Flint coffers without Ernst and Young compliance. And that's within every single Arco fund.
Right, and I think what we're, what we're saying is we would like to have a special sheet. Where it states on you, here's a piece of paper where Ernst and Young signed off. And it is just for now, just like an application process. You got to get it before you've been looking for. So did you just say that Ernst and Young did do, and they did, uh, sign off? But we should not have to be doing all of this work that we are doing right now, because we are vetting them right now. And it's in an open forum and the public's supposed to meet. And for that part, um, I, I get what my colleagues saying, but we're not in the, at the public library that is in a meeting that wasn't posted. We're not at the public library where the public could not attend. The public can attend, establish it, and we are all here. And we're going over this pretty very thorough. And so I'm comfortable now. But it should have been your friend, it should have been a meeting, but our colleagues didn't show up with me. I mean, we don't have four people who show up and to have a work committee. And so we are having to do a destiny out, and we're not even a council. We're a special meeting, we didn't make class head committee. We're a special council meeting, but it's not even our record. And I, I would have heard that we did try and it, it created a bad relationship with other colleagues. Because we, we should have get it together. And I mean, and everyone should have showed up. Cause now we can't, we haven't about time we've been at this dinner. We got that a long time ago. Asbury could have had their money if they had, if everybody showed up, everybody had their money, if everybody in the council that showed up. We gonna be doing it right now. But everybody didn't show up, so we doing it right now. We come here all night long. All night, because we ain't in this council committee meeting unless, if you get a, the E O P, it's a black form. So I'm comfortable with us doing it here. It's not been done. It's not by an idea place. I did not want, I was doing an open meeting, the public special, the colleagues didn't show up. So we're doing it now. I want to get the money approved. We're vetting it now. And I wanna go.
And thank, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Anyone else would like to speak in this round? Alright, so seeing no one else, I would like to utilize my time to speak. Prices are going up and we are gonna continue to kick the can down the road. They need to get started with putting in bids, because the longer they wait, the longer things, I mean, higher the prices are going. The price for demo, for demolishing a home is going up as we demolish homes. So we don't wanna kick the can down the road with a project that's worthy of funding. We don't wanna do that. But I also would like to answer this question, because this makes more sense. Keep in mind that council has the final authority. Council has the final authority. Whenever we engage the compliance firm, that's money spent. That is money that comes out of, out of our pocket, out of our budget. So, since council has the final say, the community com, committee, they can make any recommendation they like. The mayor, he can make any recommendation that he like, but nothing is final until this nine member body puts their stamp of approval on it. So what we will be doing is we'll be, they're prematurely engaging the compliance firm. Because the mayor and the community, um, committee, they don't have the final say. So why should we pay for their services when they're not even have the final say? If this body votes and decide that we want to move forward with resolution dot, 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 dot. And hopefully in this case, it be resolution two, three, zero, three, nine, three. After we decide this nine member body, that that's what we are gonna agree to, to move this city forward. Then, we put the stamp of approval on it and then we can give it to the compliance committee. Because there's no need to see if this don't pay compliance and we don't wanna vote for it. So let's go ahead and think about it from that perspective and look at how we're saving money through not engaging the, uh, the compliance firm. Because they don't have the final say. So keeping that in mind, we will go ahead and we, oh, and let me just say as well. I totally wholeheartedly support Asbury Church. I know they are a staple over there on the east side. They service and employ, allow, and then also provide a avenue for community service for a lot of individuals. Their line is wrapped around the corner. So when we're talking about supporting their community kitchen, it's like council was talking about learning how to cook these meals. This is what this community kitchen is for, for people to learn. So why would I send it back? There's no need. So, um, I definitely support this. And I don't wanna send it back to finance. So I'm not. Voted up or down? I think they deserve it tonight. So that being said. We are in, uh, we're in the roll call. And it's about sending a resolution, two, three, zero, three, nine, three, to finance committee. Roll call, Madam Clerk. This might be hard.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
I'm sorry, I saw him now. You did. Now. Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Piper? Ms. Warden?
No.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
There's only two yes, seven no. The vote is two yes, seven no. That, that unfilled, sent it to finance committee. So now we are, um, at round one. And so far, we have, who has spoken? Ms. May has spoken. Councilwoman in seventh ward, the sixth ward, councilwoman in eighth ward, councilwoman in the fourth ward, and in the fifth ward has spoken. Would anyone else like to speak on this resolution in the first round? Okay, no. No, sir.
I'll have a call for questions.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I've been a call for the question, supported by Ms. Priestley. So we're looking to call for the questions when people need stick vote in order for that to pass. It looks like, um, I'm sorry, it looks like we will be making our roll call vote. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Ms. Murphy? For, for call for the question.
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
No.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
Yeah. Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley, yes. Ms. Warden?
I'm not leaving my seven minutes to you.
Ms. Murphy? Well, it's five, yes, three, no, unless call for the question failed. So, while Ms. Murphy has a floor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I wanted to point.
You might wanna ask who wants to draw in the second round. He just used his draw in the second round for the first round, why not? But you don't have a draw, he just used.
So, Madam Clerk, for, for clarity purposes, if Mr. Murphy called the question during his time and that failed, unless he hit the floor, or does that make his question? Let me get to debate. Does it debate? Okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. May. So, anyone else would like to speak in the first round? No, 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 we're in the first, I just voted out. Okay, so seeing that no one else would like to speak, I would like to utilize my time for the reasons stated before. I will be support, I will be supporting this. I will be support, I will be supporting this, no need to keep the can down the road. All right, so now we're on to the second round.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, May.
You know, I'm gonna stick with this goofy meeting that's fed on top of finance committee meetings, and I'm gonna remind this council of it for weeks and months to come. Now, I'm gonna say this, every resolution that I'm looking at so far here could have been in finance committee meeting, and then the regular schedule meeting for a month, this is where this activity should have happened. We got a lot of hypocrites on this council, people talking about what they would do when they voted on it, remember that when heretofore that, Priestley damn it, we needed an overall budget before we could vote. Hypocrite, that ain't turned out to be true, it wasn't true then, and it wasn't true now. Miss I Lewis, when I appointed her at Priestley to an ad hoc committee, if I was still president, that there ought to have been a disbandment, because they thought that meant for them to go meet with the administration and folks, and then just bring resolutions to the council and put motions on the floor. There's a difference between a working session and voting on a motion. If you listen close to what's being said, for a state, the working session, then you let your guard down, the clock ain't running, you demand that Ernst &amp; Young be, and you get the work done. What they doing is bringing resolutions that they didn't review with the administration, and they want us to vote on millions of dollars in three to five minutes. And if they listen to Attorney Kim and the legal department, don't begin, very important, he told the major to deliberate outside of a council meeting, illegal under the office meeting statute, illegal. Ms. Lewis, that got up and broke the law, that reconvened the law, just a couple of weeks ago, and then had the nerve to stand in our press conference and say it was chaotic on council.
Ms. May?
You go ahead, baby.
Let's stick to the resolution two-three-zero-three-nine-three, Alfa funds and allocating them to Advery Community Development Center.
Ms. Lewis, when I criticize you at the process, that's relevant to resolution, um, two-three-zero-three-nine-three. You putting it on the agenda, breaking laws, branding it here tonight, is relevant. And anybody with good sense know that, you need to develop a thicker skin. When y'all can span out my accent and talk about me, you and this word, and then when I'm here, you wanna use the boogie bullpits and boogie me and say, don't mention my name, it's not relevant, you put it off of you. You call a special meeting, and the timing of it is relevant to me. You must like anybody in front of the booth, and don't understand relevant. You can't strong-mind me by calling those special meetings with one of your cronies, and then tell me not to talk about the special meeting, this should have been in committee meetings, and it should have been in council meeting meetings. It is relevant, the way we moving around here in this city hall, holding press conferences in council chambers, talking about being in scheduling a meeting, trying to make me vote on it, because certain folks here want to join the meeting. They buying into it, it's hypocrisy, when we call the special meeting to deal with Alfa, y'all didn't show up. Recall language was approved because you didn't show up, recall language was approved on Priestley because she didn't show up. Recall language was approved on Eva Warren, who you press conferences with because she didn't show up. And she gonna be an easy target to trick it to this about that, and you gonna tell me talking about y'all scheduling a meeting, that's relevant.
Well, let me, I'm like, what? How is what he's talking about, what we call, not his team doing to those, or something, or funny with us? You are correct, so, for Ms. May to go ahead and proceed to...
He can, he can be correct, and your eyes are incorrect, I am correct, Mr. Murphy, because if folks had showed up when we called a special meeting, we wouldn't be here properly tonight. You got to be a nun, and they come, and you're not saying that talking about post-vision...
Hey, y'all gotta turn over the pause, I gotta make a run.